Evening, everyone. Welcome to our July ninth, twenty twenty five Planning Board meeting. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Chairman Don Curry.
Here.
Paul Chabardini.
Here.
Vicky Gannett.
Here.
Jack Mattis.
Here.
Bruce Prince.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Sorry, I took your mic. First on our agenda is the minute, the June eleventh, twenty twenty five meeting.
I just had.
Had a few.
Yeah, two corrections on page five, line seven, ends while referenced. I think it should be referencing same page, line thirteen counsel. If we just change the spelling to C O U N S E L, I think it was referring to applicant's attorney. So I think if we just change that, then that'll clarify it.
Anything else? So I make a motion that we approve the minutes with those changes. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, our first is a time extension request from the New York State Police Headquarters. And it's almost Fire District, two ninety-five Route one hundred subdivision. This is based on resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh five, town map seventeen dot eighteen dash one dash one dot two. And it's a request for night egg time extension from August first, first, twenty twenty-five up to and including October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five for our approval.
Do you have any update or information on what this is?
I can provide an update on that. The process is moving forward with Veolia to obtain updated will serve letters, which the D E C process has finalized and Veolia has the information that they need to proceed with that. So I met with them middle of last week and that's in process. So hopefully this is the last extension that they will need.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, make a motion, a motion that we pass the some, the, uh, the time extension.
I'll second that request.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is another time, I'm sorry. Oh, you have to recuse, yes, of course. Next is another time extension from Melissa Harney, preliminary subdivision approval and stormwater management and erosion sediment control permit, Tan Carol Lane, and resolution twenty twenty-five oh one, town map sixteen dot oh seven dash one dash three. And the time extension is from July eighth, twenty twenty-five up to and including October fifth, twenty twenty-five. Any discussion, comments, questions?
You, you could, you could come up and just.
Yes.
Yep, speak a little on it.
Let you know that we are currently working with the Health Department to get the approval. We're working back to you soon.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh.
Grant the extension?
Yeah, grant, grant the time extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, next is a public hearing for three Catherine Place, application for wetland and water course protection and stormwater management erosion sediment control town map, twenty-seven dot eighteen dash one dash twenty-four. And Madam Secretary, have we made notes in the papers or whatever method we use now?
Legal notes published in the Journal of News on six, five, the adjoining property owners were notified via email, they June nineteenth, twenty five.
Thank you. And for the record, project wishes to install an in-ground pool patio and a rain garden. And for the record, also, the property is located at three Catherine Place and it's located in our eighty zoning district. Good evening.
Evening, Chairman, members of the board, Andy Chung, A C Engineering. Coming back to the planning board, addressed all of Steve's comments, addressed the open space committee, they had a concern with an open grate for a proposed catch basin for the stormwater collection system that we replaced with a solid grate. Basically approximately eight hundred and eighty square foot in-ground pool and patio, uh, located, uh, within a one hundred foot, um, stream bank. So we've taken into account, uh, some additional plantings that the owner will, will do as part of the mitigation next to the pool and patio area, as well as the stormwater collection for that area will be routed via a pipe down to a proposed rain garden at the lower, uh, the lower elevation of the property. Um, in addition, I know there was some conversation about a shed being moved, but we had moved it away, further away from the water course and closer to the pool itself. Uh, and that will be part of the barrier, um, for the fencing around the pool.
Dave, Dave and Steve?
The applicant has addressed our comments.
Anyone before I hear from anybody on the planning board, is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this? Now let's.
Somebody at the back.
Come on, thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you just identify yourself and speak into the mic, please.
My name's Derek Fay. Um, I live at five Catherine Place. So I just kind of wanted to just understand, because I don't understand any of this language. So I'm just trying to see a visual.
Sure.
I'm sure you can explain that to me. That's, that's kind of all I wanted to.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it's my two week. Did you open the public hearing?
Uh, no, I did not. Sorry, Michael.
No, you're fine. I just wanted to check. I didn't know.
I just said, was there anybody here from the public? So I'm officially opening a public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so yeah, just if you can kind of just show me based. So that's all, that's my way.
Sure.
Can you see that? Okay?
Let me move up a little bit. That's all right. I'll use my pad.
We found it.
Found it. Can't live without. So here is three Catherine Place. This is Jane's property. This is her house right here. This is the front of her property. So her driveway comes this way. So the road is right over here. Um, this is her backyard. So the reason this is really the only place that the pool can go is because her septic system is right over here. So if, I mean, you're, you live next door, so you know this is, this is the water course, right? And based on the location of the water course, all work has to be done outside. This, this is, this line is the one hundred foot buffer for this water course. Um, so technically any construction that's being done within this hundred, hundred foot buffer requires planning board approval. So in essence, this is the pool right here. There's a small patio that's, that, that circles around it. Um, you are, what number are you?
I'm over.
Oh, you're, you're, you're over here. Okay, so, so basically there's an existing shed that's at the end of her driveway. She's really just going to orient it at thirty-five degrees and just move it over a little bit to accommodate the location of the pool and the patio. Um, in addition, there's a stormwater portion of this patio and the pool, which is, so there's a stone wall that travels down here. So it's basically an underground pipe which travels, uh, to the backyard, to the, the area where it's grass before it becomes woods. And there's going to be a rain garden and then basically a rain garden. It says, a, a, a garden with mulch and there's going to be plantings in it. And the purpose of that is to take the stormwater from the patio, route it to a rain garden. Um, it's like a decorative, but also a functional, uh, stormwater mitigation device that we use, um, for, for stormwater management and also for water quality. And then whatever doesn't percolate through, uh, there's an underdrain pipe, which takes the water that doesn't perk through and then route it out to the end of the, the, basically the water course, the, 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 the stream that that comes down. Um, in addition, there's also going to be plantings. So these types of plants are, you know, wetland type plantings, small shrubs, some ferns, things of that nature along the slope to kind of enhance that slope as well. So literally what you will see is probably the shed and then probably these plantings right here.
I'm not concerned with this. See it's just waters being routed.
Yep, all the, all, all the waters routed down, down the hill in their backyard. It's going to go into a little rain garden. Small storms, everything will percolate through. Large storms, they'll get into the underdrain pipe. Underdrain pipe will take that water out.
Understood. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You got, you pretty much clear on your questions? Were answered sufficiently? Okay. Is there anyone else from the public here? I make a motion and we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Want to vote on the draft resolution? Deal? Directing to staff to prepare one, sorry, yeah. Everybody comfortable with that? Yeah. I make a motion that we accept that as written.
Not that we ask.
Direct staff to prepare.
To prepare.
I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Next, continuation of public hearing for twenty-three and twenty-five Hilltop Road. It's an application for steep slope protection, wetland and water course protection, stormwater management and erosion sediment control and tree removal permits. This project proposes construction of two single-family houses with septic and a well, and to extend a common driveway, which portion of which was previously installed and it was approved under resolution number ninety-one dash six and related stormwater improvements and a remaining individual driveway. For the record, the property is located at twenty-three and twenty-five Hilltop Road and it's in an R eighty zone. Good evening. I thought somebody was zooming in on it. Yeah, there you are. Any comments?
No comments.
Okay. Stephen, Dave?
The, um, the applicant and their engineer has met with the Bureau of Fire Protection and, uh, they modified the access drive accordingly. Uh, that was consistent with what they presented to the board last time. Uh, so all of our technical comments have been addressed at this time.
Dave, you have any comments now? Is there anyone here from the public? This is a continuation of public hearing. Anyone here to speak on this matter? Make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The board have any comments or questions for the applicant? Or engineer? No?
No, if everything was addressed, uh, there's no additional public comments. Uh, all of the proper notifications have been made. I, uh, would make a motion that we can direct staff to prepare a resolution for the site.
We have.
We have what?
Yes, we do have, have one. Yes, we do.
That we need to discuss.
Right. Do you want to go over that?
That was, oh, you're right. My bad.
Yeah.
Yep.
I guess I have, I have questions.
Sure.
Because we've gotten noted helpfully, thank you, in the resolution is, uh, uh, well, it doesn't appear a line consecutive numbered, a line eight, six, eighty-seven, um, is looking at that, uh, there's a reference to, uh, the Woodard and Curran, uh, six memo not addressed. I think that's really in relation to the trail issue, right? Trail access. Um, and so there's something that's out there and also there are some questions in the conditions. Um, condition eight, nine, and ten, um, which also is going, going back to the trail, uh, question. Um, there's number nine is about possible additional bonding for common driveway and a different water practice for interluts may be required. So I just need to, um, I think we need to flesh that out, all that out. And it's in, it seemed to be in parallel on both resolutions when I looked at it.
Right. So in terms of the, the Woodard and Curran items, um, there's no further, that comment has been addressed.
Okay.
We asked the question for the applicant to provide some additional information about whether there are any, uh, trail access easements. They've done the research. I think, uh, the planning board's council has also conducted some research on that. Um, and we understand there not to be not any, uh, formal easements, um, for that.
Okay, so the note at lines eighty-six and eighty-seven can be removed.
Can be struck.
Correct? Okay, great.
Similarly, at one twenty-six on the resolution.
Okay, so that can be struck too. Great.
Correct.
Um, item number nine, the additional bonding for common driveway. And I think that's probably still the same in the other one. I, yes.
Is that on resolution eleven?
They're in both of them. I think it's in resolution eleven. Also, resolution twelve have that as a same condition.
Okay, right. Gotcha. Okay.
Tuesday. So. I think, uh, with respect to, uh, condition number nine, uh, which is reflected in both, you're saying additional bonding for common driveway may be required, uh, by the towns, um, what's these?
Engineering technician.
Engineering technician. As applicable?
By the towns.
And was it, what's this?
As applicable or if applicable?
If applicable.
If.
Right.
Okay. And then.
Number ten can be. Number ten, I think, just in, in referring to with Steve, uh, he thinks that number ten could be struck.
Yes.
Struck, okay. And so that's on.
Both.
So both documents, the same changes.
Yep.
Are you okay with those changes? Are you okay with those? Martin?
Yes, yes, sir. I am okay with that. Yes.
And we just have to note the closing of the public here on the line eighty-two. Oh, no, there's no addition posed. Get rid of the, the question marks at the end of line eighty-two.
Yeah, that's in case it wasn't, I'm assuming.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then. Uh, get rid of the question marks at the end of line eighty-five.
Right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Michael, do we do each of these resolutions separately? Or can we do one, what each requires its own vote?
You should vote on each one separately, Mr. Chairman.
I'm just looking if there are any other changes.
I bet those are the only ones that I saw.
Right, and what? Make a motion, make a motion that we, uh, approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash ten, which is a granting of conditional approval for wetland and water course protection permit and stormwater management and erosion sediment control permit.
What's the resolution number?
I said twenty twenty-five dash ten.
Eleven and twelve.
There's a ten as well.
I have ten, eleven, twelve.
That's, uh, Tomahawk. I was confused.
Oh, shoot.
Yeah.
Sorry. Was it, you're right. I apologize.
That's okay.
Strike that, please. Uh, make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-five dash eleven, which is a granting conditional approval for wetland and water course protection permit, steep slopes protection permit, stormwater management and erosion sediment control permit and tree removal permit to Martin Parenti Hilltop Development LLC, town map thirty-seven dot eleven dash one dash one dot one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, which is granting conditional approval for wetland and water course protection permit, steep slope action permit, stormwater management and erosion sediment control permit and tree root permit to Martin Parenti Hilltop Development LLC, map thirty-seven dot eleven dash one dash one dot.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So pleasure working with you, sir.
Thank you very much, board members. It's been a pleasure and, um, looking forward with, uh, working with the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Lot of rock.
He's working.
Yeah. Next on our agenda is ninety-nine Tomahawk Street. It's an application for wetland and water course protection and stormwater management and erosion sediment control town map twenty-seven dot thirteen dash one dash twenty-five dot one. Good evening.
Uh, Matt Sorrell, with us Sorrell Engineering here representing Mr. Robert Manners, the owner of the property at ninety-nine Tomahawk Street. Uh, there's no real update to bring to the board, uh, this evening. Uh, we had our public hearing opened, uh, last month. Uh, we still have not received any word from the D E C regarding the, uh, the jurisdictional determination. Uh, so we're, we're in a holding pattern right now as far as the project's going. Uh, we did receive the draft resolution, uh, via email or here this morning. And we're here to, uh, follow up and hopefully close out the, uh, public hearing portion of the permit application.
Thank you. Dave and Steve?
Yeah, we have no technical comments on it.
Um, is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak? If not, make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, board members?
Can someone refresh my memory why we need a jurisdictional determination from D E C on this project?
Think Steve can answer. Yeah.
The, the D E C updated their regulations to expand the scope of water courses that they wanted to be able to review whether they have any jurisdiction on. And that was as effective in, in January of this year.
Okay. And, and would you know, and you may not know this, what determines their jurisdiction?
Uh, they reserve the right to review.
Anything and say it's theirs?
Um, within, within the guidelines of the regulation, but yes. This, this is a, an intermittent stream, um, that is, is well-defined. I would, it's up to them to, to determine they have jurisdiction there or not. I think what was happening is that there was mapping, uh, that the public was relying on and it, it was not always accurate and in every case, and so they wanted some additional. There are parameters under which the watershed has to be of a certain size. And if you are working in a watershed that exceeds that size, then you have to go to the D E C and say, I'm working here. Is this something, you know, part of, that's part of your jurisdiction? So it is unfortunate that, um, that, that process has resulted in delays for applicants. And that's what we've, what we've seen here. But, uh, in, in this case, I think the board has a, a conditional resolution ahead of it that allows, um, for the applicant to proceed when they get a notice of non-determination. And if that's not what is received, then they come back to the board. But we can at least, uh, put a pause or, or an end, have an endpoint for this particular process.
And then if the D E C determines that this does fall under their jurisdiction?
Then the applicant would have to apply for a D E C permit. You can think of this in the same way that, uh, more typical development applications come before this board where there's a condition to receive approval from the Westchester County Health Department, say septic or a well or something like that. Um, or, uh, a stormwater pollution prevention plan approval from the New York City D E P as an, as another example.
Got it.
And often the board's approval conditions are reliant on the applicant obtaining those other additional known permit approvals.
Okay. So Steve, so if, if, um, if the condition is that the, the, the applicant gets their, their jurisdictional determination and there's no change to, no substantive change to the site plan, they could proceed with getting the building permit.
Yes.
So, but if, if the, if the E C comes back and it requires a major modification to the site plan, they would have to come back to your board for that site plan amendment.
And, and that communication will happen between D E C and the applicant's engineer, right? The, the town is not.
Yes.
I've submitted the, uh, request for jurisdictional determination to the D E C and we are pending, uh, their response.
Got it. Okay.
So just to make sure I'm clear on it, that's, that concept of where, where the applicant's being conditioned there is page three, be it further resolved, item one on page, on line one oh nine?
This is the draft resolution?
Yeah.
Yes. That, that.
Yes.
Yes.
That's what.
Yes.
It, it doesn't say anything about jurisdictional determination, but everything else about it is, is capturing it. Okay, thanks. Just want to make sure we're all clear on that.
Chris, it sounds like you or I are on the paint, same page. I feel for this applicant.
Yeah.
Cause he's sitting here with his hands tied and, and there's nothing to get on. I mean, he could very well come August and, and not have received anything from them. Very possible.
It's about ninety days out right now.
Right, but in a conversation with Steve and correct me if I'm wrong, it's also very possible they, they come back with a minor change, which you would, anybody else would call a field change. So it doesn't, he doesn't have to come all the way back to the board. He just make the change in the field.
The threshold we, we often apply for, for minor changes in the field is, has, does the, does that change result in any, uh, modification to public process and to the information available to the board? It's often, you're moving a catch basin three feet from the left to the right. You're not.
Right.
Taking a catch basin and making it into a swimming pool.
Right.
You're not dramatically expanding the limits of disturbance.
Steve, is there any provision for D E C's failure to respond resulting in a certain amount of time results fault to the benefit of the applicant? Or does the applicant just wait for a year?
I, I don't recall what the limits in the code are, but I believe so.
Okay, something.
I wouldn't want to misspeak.
There is a time period with which the D E C must respond. I don't mean to step on you, but I don't recall the exact time period.
Okay.
There is one. I think it's a default approval if they fail to.
Oh, a default approval?
I believe if they fail to respond within a certain amount of, a certain number of days, um, past the ninety day, because it's ninety days they have to respond. And then I think there's a grace period after that with which the D E C, if it fails to respond during that period, it's a default approval for a default non-determination.
I think what we're saying is we feel for you. Sorry. But you, you realize it's out of our hands. But what we can do, if the board so chooses, we can have staff prepare, um, a draft resolution with this condition.
Yeah, Chairman, you have that.
That we, that's.
Yeah, that's what, I mean.
Yes.
We can vote on it.
Yes, yes.
Say, I'm sorry. We have that. And, um, as Vicky pointed out, we're covered with the, with the comments.
Yeah.
Everybody okay with this resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
I would make a motion to accept the draft resolution, right? That's what we need to.
Yes.
Language as, uh, stated.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the record, it's resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten, which is granting conditional approval for wetland and water course protection permit and stormwater management erosion sediment control permit to Robert Manners, who's the owner, Sorrell Engineering P L C, he's the applicant. Town map twenty-seven dot thirteen dash one dash twenty-five dot one. We just, we just approved it, so.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, um, two singular wirelesses. The first one is a T and T application for amended special use permit, a wireless communications facility on twenty-five eighty Route thirty-five.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Curry, members of the board, Mr. Smith. Thank you for hearing our application tonight. Sorry about that. Um, I could go briefly over the application. It's fairly simple. We have an existing cell site.
I'm sorry, just state your name.
Oh, I apologize. So sorry. Uh, Marty McGee, Aerosmith Development out of Saratoga Springs here representing new singular wireless, more commonly known as A T and T. As far as the application itself, simply what we're doing is we're doing an equipment swap. Currently have a set number of antennas on a monopine tree pole. Uh, we're just going to be, we're going to be keeping six of those antennas. Three of those antennas we're going to be swapping. The new antennas are a little bit smaller than the existing ones. These are still, you know, uh, stealth, uh, behind branches. Anyone noticing any? We also have something called R R Hs which sit behind the antennas, which aren't seen if it wasn't a monopine. But since it is, it certainly wouldn't be seen. We currently have, uh, I believe, uh, twelve, I'm sorry, fifteen of those. We're going to have nine. So we're actually dropping some equipment. Uh, so we'll have less equipment, uh, than we did before. That's the basic gist. As far as the cabinets on the ground, we'll just be retrofitting them. We won't be adding additional cabinets. We're allowed up to four. We'll still have four cabinets. So that's all within our lease space on the ground. I said, uh, fairly vanilla, uh, application, but there were some comments from Mr. Smith if I could address those.
Please.
Thank you. Um, we did receive a, a letter, I believe, yesterday afternoon with, um, some requests for certificates of authorization for the engineers. We could certainly get those for you. I think we got you a few today.
Okay.
Yes.
With a few to, a few to come. There was one thing that I. With a few to a few to come. There was one thing that I wanted to to point out about the in-person.
Please.
Structural. Um we read went over the code and uh that does apply, but it applies for a special permit renewal, which this is not. This is just an amendment to a a special permit application, a special permit use application. It's not a renewal. If it was a renewal, yes, that would be required. We would be required to do that, but according to the code, we are not because it is not that. So we could certainly get you all the certificates of authorization for all the engineers who have their license numbers and New York's their or a license to operate in New York State. Their license numbers are on all the plans, but we could certainly get you certificates of authorization. On top of that, just the inside inspection wouldn't apply for this. It would apply for a special permit renewal. That is not the case here because it is not a special permit renewal. It's just an amendment to it. If that uh makes sense to you.
I can address that, but I'll wait for the board.
Okay. Board member comments or questions and then?
But just to confirm, you're not increasing the weight load on the tower and you're not increasing wind resistance of the tower?
Correct. And what it was, we submitted a structural by licensed New York State engineer, which basically states all that and approves that out. Yes, sir.
You're switching up abling as well or?
Uh yeah, we are switching old cables for new cables. Uh we're not adding additional cables, but yeah. It's basically, it's uh, you know, it's uh, it's something that A T and T is doing throughout their entire network, twenty seven thousand sites. They're switching from one brand of antenna to another. And this is part of it. This is why you'll keep seeing us for any site in somewhere.
And and all of the debris, all of the old equipment be removed?
Of course. Yes, absolutely. Everything will be clean and subject to inspection, certainly. And we just want to be able to get our building permit or proceed with it. Um and we could certainly get you the items that we, you know, were just requested yesterday afternoon um as a condition of approval, if you would accept that. Appreciate it. The interest of time and the interest of getting
Right.
Our antennas changed.
Steve, you have comments?
Yep, the um thank you. I I haven't had a chance to review the uh additional submitted COAs. Obviously, um that we rely the town relies on the applicant's engineers to perform, you know, pretty sophisticated analyses uh both for R F and structural and um oftentimes on these projects, uh the carriers have uh firms that they're used to working with, which may or may not have a certificate of authorization to do work in New York State, regardless of whether they have an individual who has a New York State license. So that being the distinction, just for the record, and and we do uh do a quick search on online database and if it doesn't pop up right away, just that database is tough, so we uh we ask for it. So thank you for
Understood. Absolutely. And I will provide the just we just got it yesterday. And I'm sorry, are you Steve or you?
I'm Steve Robbins.
Okay, I thought you were Dan Smith. I apologize.
He's got to get his.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Dave's got more hair.
Yeah, it's true.
I just uh true. Chairman, one more.
Sure.
Um the the application renewal on this site is how far out?
You know what? I don't have the date on it, but I do, but it's not up for renewal currently. Um but when it is, we certainly will act for that. And there will be different standards and requirements and certainly we'll meet all those as well. Time comes.
So with the the modification to the special permit to to adjust the the approval of the equipment that is being installed, the reason why we apply the requirement for 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 visual inspection to that is is because of the change in equipment. The mounting locations may be different. The weights may be different. Sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less. Our building inspector is not able to equipped to climb the tower to perform an inspection uh himself. Um nor would we expect uh that from from the town. Uh so again, the the town is relying on uh an engineering analysis, which makes sense by the computer model, which makes sense by the calculations. Um and and when it's done in a box by an engineer who has no information to rely on as as to the actual condition of the tower and the mounting brackets and the equipment, it's all based on on the theoretical capacity and it might be fine and we certainly hope it's fine. Um and we don't expect anything to fall down. But that is the reason that that provision is is in the code. And and I I certainly um can bring this up with planning board's counsel as to the the wording of this type of renewal versus the uh what's being applied there, but that's why for this, we we generally ask that um a visual inspection be included as part of the structural analysis so that we know the structural engineer has done their due diligence. There are ways, that said, there are ways that we um we can discuss uh where accommodating that. Um on these towns are uh obviously multiple carriers and um I don't recall who the owner of
It's I believe, yeah, and they are required, depending on the type of structure, within a certain amount of years.
Yes.
It could be three, it could be five, it could be seven. They are required to do that
And if that's
and visual inspection.
And if that's provided
As the own
engineer and that engineer says, I've reviewed that visual inspection and that is relatively current. It's not four years ago. Um we've accepted that. We've also uh accepted it being done as a as a condition of the approval before the equipment is mounted or in conjunction with the equipment being mounted, that the structural engineer provides a verification of the conditions uh that it's consistent with the modeling that they've done when it's able to be inspected. So those are the two ways that we've we've dealt with it, but that's the reason why we've we apply that condition.
And after too or just prior to?
Uh just prior to.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, you know, the these structures um and the mounting positions are a hundred feet up in the air and it's hard to see it from the ground. Um and the the wind is strong up there and
Oh, no, I'm I'm not. I'm not. I just wanted to, yeah.
So we we make sure that uh, you know, the calculations all make sense on paper.
It's great reasoning, obviously.
And and you know visual inspections to to cite cracks or broken welds or weak
Yeah.
You know, I mean, those kinds of things you pick up and you're right face to face with it, but you don't really get the the view from the ground.
The computer doesn't account for it.
Right.
So those are the two ways that um the town has dealt with similar conditions is either making sure that the engineer has been provided a copy of a recent section and certifies that it's it's consistent with their assumptions. Or that that inspection is done and the engineer verifies it as part of doing the work.
And what would you consider recent?
Ideally, the last two years.
That's true. Okay, and we, you know, we can also work towards uh getting you the visual inspection. My point was it's just not part of this application as a requirement. If it was a renewal permit, it would be, but it's not.
I think the the code doesn't contemplate the the change out of equipment within that period. And I think that's something that the town's looking at at updating and it's
And my point is just the code is the code written as it is written. That's my point.
And and the town would certainly like to have improved cell service and have the benefit of the new equipment and we appreciate your cooperation.
Certainly, yes. And we can get you the other certificates of authorization. Certainly, not a problem.
So I'm assuming if we would make that a a condition in the resolution.
I think there's very reasonable ways that we we apply.
Absolutely. Okay.
Visual inspection. I might and uh if I could get your card.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be great. We can discuss it. I appreciate it.
Any other board member comments or questions or any other comments?
No comments.
So I'm just seeking uh approval conditioned on getting these final certificates for the
First Yo, we've done this. Oh, Mike, do you have any any comments?
No, I I skimmed all the documents earlier. Much of it had to do with uh Steve Robbins and Dave Smith, so I just kind of reviewed it. Um if I need to get involved and do an interpretation, whether or not a visual inspection is required and I'm happy to do that. Steve, please just let me know.
Okay. Um Is the board okay with waiving a sidewalk in a public hearing? We've done this many times in the past.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I think for these adjustments like this.
I'll make a motion and that we waive the sidewalk.
Question.
Sure.
Is there any use of drones for visual inspections?
You know, we don't. I I I'd have to find out if uh if there's use, if we use drones for, I would imagine so. If it's certainly if they're already up there and you're not doing it on the ground, you'd have to use a drone. Yeah. These days it would be the the much more economical way to do it. And you have video footage, you know, so to speak. So as a suggestion, that would be a good way to go. Sorry.
Here.
And so I'll make the motion that we waive the sidewalk and the public hearing.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And also make a motion that we direct staff to prepare the draft resolution as discussed.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is our another new cellular wireless A T and T application for amended special use permit, the wireless telecommunications facility at two forty seven route one hundred.
Yes, uh again, Martin McGee, Aerosmith Development, just record. New singular wireless, more commonly known as A T and T. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This one is uh it's uh more bland than the first application because the antennas are inside a concealment pole, so no one's gonna see them. We're basically, we have six antennas in there with two arrays. We're gonna be swapping them out, putting new antennas in. It's within a pole. Again, nobody's gonna see anything. No one's ever gonna know. There really is no visual impact in any way, shape or form. Like I said, very bland, very vanilla. Um you'd also ask for the basically the same items, which we'll certainly be happy to get you and the visual inspection again. Basically, it's the same as the last application.
Mr. Chairman, that's just
Yes.
Marty, do you have the a copy of the uh the application itself?
I don't have it on me, but I know that it's been provided to Wendy, I believe.
Yeah, it was provided. And so on the application, it lists the property owner as a fire district out on the east end of Long Island.
Really?
That's that's what I said. And I I didn't I didn't get a an adequate response back from uh I forget the the woman's name from uh
Alexis, man?
Alexis, yes.
Yes.
So it was I was a little confused.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Hope it's not the Alexis I asked questions because she never sees the right answers.
That's a Marion, I mean
You're asking for Alexis. That's why it's wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah.
While it is possible, it seems very unlikely.
Yeah, I was very confused as to why a fire district would have ownership of the property, particularly because that applicant has been before this board recently and
There was no fire district.
There was no fire. The fact that the 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 owner of two forty seven route one hundred indicated that there was a perpetual easement for this site.
Right.
But he still owned the property, so um yeah, maybe a tie. I don't listen. Just clarify that as part of the record.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Would you like uh the application amended and resent or?
No, well, just that
Clarify.
Just clarify it. Yes. Okay, that's
Keep keep my copy. I can get another one.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm already writing on copy. Thank you very much.
But other than that, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, the the same condition and you could, if you, the board chooses to do a confirmatory resolution.
Okay.
As well.
For let me just for the record, it's town map twenty eight dot ten dash one dash six dot ten, just to so everyone knows what we're we're talking about.
And Crown would have a perpetual easement.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm oh, any board member comments or questions? No?
No.
Uh make a motion that we waive the sidewalk and the public hearing.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And can I also um direct staff to uh prepare the draft resolution with the one item of the actual owner being clarified?
And with the same
With same
As we
Same
By the last one.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I thank you for your time and I and I I'm very impressed at how quickly you this application.
Thanks. Hopefully in our lifetime, it's gonna be administrative. Been talking about that.
We're working on it.
Yeah.
We've been working on
Well, you sound like a politician. And last time, everybody saw that as a request from North Edge Realty to um make it for a sidewalk. Good evening. Hi.
Evening. Jared Boniello, Boniello Development, representing Boniello Development. Here to request a sidewalk of our proposed seventy three townhouse divi- uh subdivision up off of uh Route six in Baldwin Place. Any weekend that the board could coordinate uh to come out and walk, uh we do have some trails that are walkable and uh we'll get you up and down and uh really get eyes on the prop- project.
Steve, do we need some things staked out prior to us coming or Dave?
So with this particular application, the 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 matters before the town board right now.
Right.
This board has been provided with I don't know that the this board has been provided with the latest site plan, but certainly substantially similar site plans uh as for informational purposes um before going to the town board. Once the town board process is completed, the applicant will be back here for site plan
Right.
approval and environmental permits. The with as many units as are proposed, I don't think that staking out building corners uh is feasible.
Okay.
But I think it'd be helpful for the applicant to be able to mark uh the locations of site entrances and and major site features. It could be stormwater basin area or um not to a survey grade, but to for an informational purpose.
What about the center line of the road? Is that problematic or?
I mean, maybe intersections. I mean, I'm trying to in to the extent that that might shift or change.
Right, but it provides a frame of reference for the board.
Isn't there gonna be certain egress and
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So whether it's, you know, often with some of the applicants, they they have staked every fifty feet along the roadway. The state of site cover in terms of could you see a hundred feet ahead of you? Is there undergrowth? Is it fairly open?
I was about to say, the the road is generally where our trail is right now. There was a uh like a a deer trail, hiking trail that we kind of utilized and we kept cleared. So we can certainly give you an idea where the road is gonna be coming along. You have buildings flanking either side of the road. So once we have the and this isn't like the woods behind my house. There's not barberry inundating the site. It's pretty open. We're gonna have a good visual, but I will put something up the road so that we have an idea. You have an idea of what we're looking at. I'll make sure it's visibly understood.
I think it would be helpful if there are a few key points and I'm I'm just kind of taking some lessons learned from some of the other applications that that the board has done a sidewalk on a on a more expansive property. If there are three to six, you know, key points along the site where it would help be helpful for the board to stop and pause and know where those are specifically on a plan. You know, it's almost like here's point A, here's point B, here's point D, and we know where those are in a plan and those are staked out in the field. Then the board can stand there and say, okay, I'm looking at the plan. I know I'm looking at a building. I know I'm looking at this. I know I'm looking at that as a as a means to provide some of the context without needing to stake out in a lot of detail. Does that make sense?
Does.
Okay. That I think is a reasonable starting point for normally I would feel like it's a bit premature because the board hasn't seen the latest site plan, knowing that it's likely coming. If the board sees uh sees so fit and is able to schedule a site visit in August, see what we can do. Otherwise, um certainly up to the board if you prefer to wait to have the the full site plan.
We're still waiting for the zoning change from the town board, correct?
Correct. I think the applicant is trying to keep things moving and
Right. Well, I I I listened to the board member comments.
I have a question. Um can you mark clearly where the exit road to Route six would be created?
Yes, we should be able to see that from a uh from the property. Yes, I can get that.
Because I know that that's a point of contention that came before the town board at a prior hearing public hearing and that's a concern of the public was that exit road and the um the entry road through the church driveway. Will that be marked?
I can certainly mark entry from six and where we are gonna be coming out of the church, the road is already existing. We're we're actually jumping onto the church's egress.
Right.
That's
The two-way.
It's easy to figure out where that's coming in.
Okay, so that will be visible to us when we visit the site.
Yes, and and maybe I'll just double back really quick just to kind of give you a little more uh idea of what's going on. So the town board is still in the process of reviewing the zoning change. They we feel it's imminent and it's coming up soon. So yes, um we are in a bit of a holding pattern with them, but that should be coming to a close shortly. We do have a updated set of documents which we have not shared with this board. It just has been finalized. We have every intention of getting that into your hands before we come in for a formal review with this planning board. Um I could certainly get that out to you before this walkthrough.
Right.
Um so you have eyes on the layout and as um uh Dave or Steve had said, the uh layout has not changed. Uh the town board has picked apart certain details which we've been addressing. Um it's it's a pretty substantial set of documents at this point, so there's a lot of a lot of meat in there for you to review.
Okay, just so you understand, we are aware of what the town is questioning. It's important to us.
Understood.
So I I have a question for Dave and Steve. I mean, i- is it likely that there could be substantive changes that would have to prompt us to the second visit to see new new stuff? I mean, because it this does seem a bit premature that there's a lot of things still in motion here.
I think that's always possible. Um, I don't want to speak for the the board and its review. I don't believe that this is a matter before the town board this week, but, uh, in fact, would be before the town board, uh, in August. I think it is, to the extent that it is helpful to this board to to see the site and begin thinking about and formulating questions as it relates to the site plan review. Then you you can kind of adjust in your head the and understand the context of the site before you start seeing the plans. But it is certainly possible that this board has changes that it may want to go out and see again, and there's no reason you can't schedule a second site visit.
So thinking about it. Realistically. We have a meeting.
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth, so. I I don't want to go if you're not there, Steve, that's my, one of my big priorities, so you.
I'm out the end of August, but early August.
For the end of August, so. If we just. I I don't see a reason to go before our August meeting. I would think if we wait until then, we've got more time for the town town board to hold forth. If the applicant wanted to give us a preview here and there was time, you could always do that before we go into the field on the Saturday. If we made, if we, if if enough people were available on. My phone, uh, like maybe the sixteenth or something? The it's it's kind of a nice setup because we meet and then like four days later, we could go.
And the town board should have made their decision by then, I would think, I mean, I'm.
Which would be on the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it it kind of gives us a little.
It kind of, everything falls into place.
Yeah, or not.
Or not.
But we.
And on the thirteenth, you could always cancel.
Absolutely, yes.
So we'll do a tentative. Um. Eight sixteen?
Long as you're you're right.
I'm asking for for feedback.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Feedback on the premise of a sidewalk or feedback on that?
Both.
Um, I was on the fence about, uh, doing a sidewalk so soon without the possibility of knowing that there's, uh, changes that would be made. That we may have been prompted by the town board. Um, but then I think about the size and scope of this project. Um, and and the work that Boniello has done in this town previously. And I I think I think that we should do a sidewalk sooner rather than later. And then should should it be required if there is substantial changes to the how we, how you presented it to us initially as the concept? Um, that we just do another sidewalk again, I think we would owe it to the applicant and to the town, given the the size of this. You know, if this was a single family thing and we're going back and forth, we might want to wait, right? Uh, but you're proposing, what is it, eighty eighty-two units?
Seven seventy-three.
Seventy-three, sorry, you know, you're proposing a a large amount of units there on a large size. Um, I think we should do the sidewalk on the sixteenth, and then if need be, we do it again if there's any changes to that.
And and we theoretically, the town board probably have made their decision on the fourteenth, and we'll have another most recent set of of plans in our hands on the thirteenth.
That would be my intention.
Okay.
So.
Nine AM?
Nine o'clock?
Sure.
That works.
The last time we discussed this, because we were gonna maybe do it on the fourteenth of June, it was, uh, we park at the Yorktown Assembly of God parking lot. Is that still gonna be the plan?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I'm sorry, we're parking at the church?
I think that was the.
Yes, Yorktown Assembly of God parking veil.
There's a huge lot behind the church.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can put that in the note first, yeah, please.
It's, uh, two fifty-three Mayapack Avenue, if anybody wanted the exact address of church there.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we schedule a sidewalk for August sixteenth, nine AM at two fifty-three Mayapack Avenue.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And for the record, our next meeting is August thirteenth, three days prior to this sidewalk. Um, motion to adjourn?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
You, council, enjoy.
Good night, everybody. I'm going on to the balcony and I'm gonna sit in the nice breeze.